I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of June 6, 2019. To order at 6 o'clock PM and ask our Deputy Clerk Richards for roll call.
Mayor, Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Richards present, Clerk Simmski absent. Trustee Eddington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Village Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Please all rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and we'll move on to the open forum. And again, this is an opportunity, I do have a request. If anybody's here that wants to address the board on anything that's not on the agenda, the open forum is the time to do that. Margaret Donnell, she's got a, looks like a question for us.
I do. Question with a statement. So my name is Margaret Donnell. I am a nineteen-year Westmont resident. I am a mother, a wife, an attorney, and a volunteer, pretty much in that order. And I have very active athletic children and they have been their whole lives. I'm also a founding member of the group Stop Sterogenics, which I am sure that everyone here has heard of. And if you haven't, let me know because I will talk to you about it. Also, the president of a not-for-profit that was started called Citizens for Clean Air. I, along with the rest of the grassroots movement, have been fighting Sterogenics with all of the surrounding communities around Willowbrook. And those communities have been vocal. Westmont, however, has seemed to be silent, frighteningly so. I'm not sure if any of you watched or read about the EPA forum the other week. But the range for the ethylene oxide exposure from Sterogenics is far worse than what even the US EPA initially thought back in September of last year and then again in November at their first forum. The range for the ethylene oxide dispersion is actually twenty-five miles before it hits zero. The greatest concentrations are around the 1.5-mile range around the facility. Yet there are still staggering levels found in the six-mile range before they start to go down. Now, I went on Google and looked as the crow flies. And I live in the southeast corner of Westmont. My home is 2.8 miles away as the crow flies. And this building we're standing in here today is 3.67 miles away. Well within the six-mile dangerous radius. Many residents of Westmont spend years traveling in the area, going to Willowbrook, going to Target. Their children play and have sports in all of the immediate vicinity's. Not to mention being exposed 24/7 for the last thirty-five years. And those numbers that came out a couple weeks ago are actually low because they can't go back the thirty-five years when there were no control measures in place to see how bad the levels really were. And it just doesn't affect Westmont. It goes far beyond Westmont at this point. It goes all the way to Chicago on one end. So residents of Westmont now have the data showing that we have been under an incredible risk. And while you yourself, Mayor, do not have the authority to do anything directly against Sterogenics in terms of getting them shut down or moved out of the area, it is time for Westmont to step up. It's time for Westmont to join the fight against Sterogenics. And I'm here to ask the trustees and the mayor to join the lawsuit that was filed by the Attorney General's Office and the DuPage County State's Attorney against Sterogenics. A number of other communities have already done that, including Hinsdale, Darien, I believe, Western Springs, and Burr Ridge. That is my request.
And I've asked the attorney, because we've kept up with this and we've had numerous press releases. We've even talked to Mayor Trilla, offering any support that he may need. But I'll ask our attorney to address your specific question.
Thanks. And thanks for your volunteer efforts on this. I think all the residents appreciate that. And it's a sad situation. As the mayor pointed out, the village has put out at least five different press releases with information for the benefit of the residents, has kept in touch with the other communities as to their activities. And certainly, I think you go on the other websites of the communities, whether it's Willowbrook, who's most directly offended, or those who are within a mile or less of the facility site. You know, they have a lot of information about what's going on that I think everyone has seen at one point or another, including recent updates. As far as the request for a lawsuit, that's a great question and not something that the village hasn't looked into. The recent mapping information from the US EPA that I've seen shows kind of the circles of contamination and the levels of contamination, and this is the pre-seal, but before it was shut down, levels of contamination. And what the US EPA deems as over, I think it's expected exposure on a daily basis for residents over a seventy-year period, here's what the levels are. And Westmont is quite a bit removed from the most dangerous level, where they, not the most dangerous level, but from the least dangerous level that would still be cancer-causing, potentially, for residents in the eyes of the US EPA. And based on that distant separation and that we're outside of that kind of danger plume, what I'll call it, I think internally with staff discussions did not feel like we would have standing as a village to intervene into the lawsuit.
Just the lawsuit, though, is what we're talking about.
Just the lawsuit, right.
We're participating in different ways.
Yeah. So other communities, Hinsdale, Willowbrook, Darien, Burr Ridge, have joined in that lawsuit because they're closer and their residents are within, I think, that designated plume that could be deemed dangerous. The EPA through the Attorney's General's Office is seeking to permanently, I think, shut down Sterogenics and to assess civil fines. They're not looking for any relief for residents who may have been impacted by this. The communities that have joined in likewise have joined in through either nuisance or trespass lawsuits, as I understand it. Because you can't just join in a lawsuit, you have to be able to allege harm to the public and have to state a cause of action. And I don't think that the village can in good faith allege harm when, according to the US EPA standards, we're outside of that plume that they consider to be harmful to allege nuisance or trespass or some other cause of action. So, you know, it's a decision for the mayor and the board to make. And it's an important decision, but personally, I think we would have a problem as a village with standing, given our distance from the site. As far as other support, certainly, the board could consider, and I know the mayor has personally offered, any other support, whether it's a resolution and support, more information to the residents. We've only had a couple emails ever from residents about this and village staff has always timely responded to them. So I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and then, so I was interrupting him, but there's other ways that, you know, we are participating. And it's not just Westmont or these close neighbors, it's all of DuPage County. And the council of government, we belong to, DuPage mayors and managers. And this has been a subject for as long as it's been a subject, you know, at least the important part, you know, since last August. And the mayor and I are on that board. Trustee Eddington sits on the legislative committee. We were participating in the Senate bill that went through about the, whether it was, it had a couple parts to it. Zero emissions plus a notification requirement. So, you know, we are participating, it's just as far as the lawsuit, those were the reasons not. Your organization is a great source of information, so it would be worth you right now identifying, you know, where people can find that online because it's a good go-to place as well, if you would.
Yeah, well, you can either go on the website at juststopstergenics.com or find us on Facebook.
I think we all have read Dr. Howard's ongoing emails about the situation.
She's not a member of Stop Sterogenics, unfortunately.
No, but she has a lot of information. So again, we're not, we may be silent, but we're willing to participate and offer our support.
Well, I'm going to respectfully disagree with your position. I would ask you to go back into the US EPA's website under Willowbrook and take another look at those mappings. They did make it vague. We have asked them to amend the mapping. The numbers increased so that now, what they initially thought was a one hundred in a million risk within that one-mile radius, which was excessive, is now a one hundred in a million risk at the six-mile mark, which we are in the middle of. The risk right around the one-and-a-half-mile mark is now five hundred to one thousand in a million. So I do believe that you have a basis, not giving you my legal advice. I will also tell you, maybe talk to the mayor of Downers Grove. I believe that they are considering now joining in the lawsuit because they are also within that one hundred in a million mark. So I would encourage it. You may get more phone calls because obviously I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna let everybody know what I was told here today. So I do hope that the residents do become more vocal in Westmont. I think they haven't because we all kind of thought that we were a little bit safer.
And I just want to point out that the mapping information that we have is based on a recent call with the Attorney General who pointed us to a link and what she believed was the most information from the US EPA, which again showed that hundred...
It was the pre-seal order map that we were talking about.
Yeah. And now there's different maps also that show air quality levels throughout the country, including this area, from all air contaminants, not just from Sterogenics. That's separate. You know, all of Chicago's in a potentially dangerous zone, as is portions of Westmont. But when you look just at the Sterogenics map, I didn't see that the village is close enough to have standing to get into the litigation.
Understood. And if you'd like to speak with Kelly Reimer, who did the dispersion modeling at the Illinois EPA Region, or US EPA Region Five, I'd be happy to provide you her contact information.
Any information you can get, send to the village manager.
Will do.
We'll gladly look into it.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Every board member here would echo that, I would have.
Absolutely.
Thank you, I will.
Thank you.
Appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, thank you. Seeing no other open forum, I'll move on to reports. And I've got real quick, a couple reports. And of course, it's beautiful outside. Tonight is cruise night, it's the first night. I know Trustee Little will also tell us about that. But we've got a short agenda and I'm sure all of us will be out there in a little bit. Our walk to Shinchu County, we have already walked 5,230 miles as a group. That's five times our monthly goal. The public walked 1,570 miles, the staff walked 3,660. Jenny did 3,000 of that 3,600. Walking all the time. If you have not let us know your May miles, please email them to fitnesschallenge@westmont-il.gov. So getting a lot of people participating. And like we said, we're over five times. So not only is it a, to honor our sister city, but also to get people out and healthier. So I'll turn now to our deputy.
So I have a little note here saying that the Luge is back. June 22nd and 23rd, the US Olympic Luge team will return to Westmont for the sixth time to conduct their Midwest search for the future Luge Olympians. There is more information on the website regarding that.
Thank you. Trustee Barker?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things this evening. Westmont First will hold their next meeting on August 19th. There'll be no June and July meeting, which is typical this time of year. And we are having what we feel is real good success with the Community Arts Initiative. The Caliphits have graciously offered their building for three art events this summer during the street fair. And we're taking advantage of that. And the signups are going on currently through the village website for any artist who would like to display over there. So we're looking forward to that. And then, this past week has been kind of an EIC storm. We were out Saturday with the storm drain stenciling. Director Ramsey was out there guiding us. But I think we did almost 200 basins. And we had some new folks participating in that. So that was exciting to get that taken care of. And along with that, we currently have a composting survey on the village website. And we're asking people to gauge interest in composting component to our waste management proposal, as well as other interests that they may like to see EIC get involved in. So we're, have that ongoing. And then that group of great people will be out at the street fair this summer, presenting three different topics over the course of the summer as well. And of course, one of the nights will be the bees and stuff from Richmond Gardens that we're excited about. That is all. Thank you.
Trustee Little?
Thank you, Mayor. As Jenny would say, turn your TVs off and get out there. The cruise night tonight, because tonight's the first night. It's dusted off and bring your car out. So everybody's out there and having a good time, I hear. They do have music at two ends of the event. We have one close to the Knights of Columbus across the street. And we have another band down at Neat. So that's every Thursday night between now and the end of August. So please come out for that. That's a lot of fun. Events for the family. They have kids' activities, crafters, bounce house provided by the police department and the fire department. We've got exotic reptiles vendors and a whole lot more. So please come out and join us for that one. And that's all I have, Mayor.
What's next Thursday?
Next Thursday is the exciting night. It's a police car night. So we've already got thirty-five cruisers coming. So at least, that was as of last week. So it's gonna be a big event and we hope to see everybody out there.
Good.
Thank you.
Trustee Nero?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is June 20th, 4:30, right here in Village Hall. And also available online is our 2018 Water Quality Report. Please check it out. If you're curious what's in our drinking water, it's a report we have to file every year. It's pretty informative, especially if you like that kind of stuff. And lastly, I wanted to thank our Public Works Director and Assistant Director, Mike Ramsey and Orielle. I get a few complaints from Oakwood residents about some overgrown brush right off of 35th and Cass. No one knew what jurisdiction it was. Oakbrook, DuPage County. And they responded right away. Got ahold of Oakbrook, got them to get the okay, and they're gonna take care of it. And it was real quick and residents were real happy, so. Thanks, Mike. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. I'll turn to this side and I'll ask Trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had an Economic Development Committee meeting yesterday and we discussed brew pubs and the future. It's been pointed out to us a couple times that Chicago is the number-one brewing area for the United States. So we're gonna see more and more of this coming forward. So we're working on some zoning questions that are coming up. We also are continuing our discussion of the Quincy Street, East Quincy Corridor of rezoning. And that'll be ongoing discussions. Larry also updated us on the current economic development going. You know, the medical center on Ogden is moving forward. The BMW dealership campus expansion is, as all of us are seeing, is moving forward. The naditorium is, has walls up at this point. So, and then further down at 63rd and Cass, we've all been seeing the ongoing improvements there. I mentioned to Manager May that the stormwater couldn't have worked out better as far as the timing. It seems like it's really working. It has water in it all the time. And then lastly, our next meeting will be June 5th at 9:00 AM and that will be here at Village Hall. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things. Our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be August 15th at 4:30 here in the Village Hall. Everyone is welcome to attend. The police department had their torch run for Special Olympics. The torch run was in Westmont this past weekend. Several officers and Special Olympians participated, so congratulations to them. Cruising nights, just touching on Trustee Little's update. Yes, squad car night is next week, June 13th. Lights and sirens parade will be at the end at nine o'clock. So the weather forecast looks really good. We've got our order in for good weather. So come on out, enjoy the evening. The police department's annual report is now on the village website, so check that out. Moving to the fire department. Cruising nights for the fire department will be August 8th. The lights and sirens parade will be at the end of the night at nine o'clock. We're also gonna get our order in early for good weather on that one, too. So stay tuned because we'll be coming up with more reminders on that. The fire department annual report is also on the village website, so check that out. And then I have a great, I have the great privilege to represent a 25-year recognition. If I could please invite up Chief Riley and EMS Director-Captain Lynn Droule up to the podium. Okay. The Village of Westmont honors Lynn Droule, EMS Director-Captain, member of the village's fire department, in recognition of 25 years of dedicated service to the community, 1994 to 2019. Congratulations, Lynn.
Now tell me, she came in with you?
Don't do that to her!
No.
And we'll ask.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 You got another twenty-five.
Say if you were? Oh, come on.
I'll tell you, I can remember when I got here twenty-five years ago. I didn't, it just went so fast. And I can't thank you guys, the village, and the fire department enough for a wonderful career. So I'm kind of hoping that, it might be a couple more years, we'll see. You know, I don't know yet. So you guys will be the first to know, you know, when I do decide to go. So thanks.
You're not allowed.
And you don't have to worry when you were shaking hands. My hands are clean because you taught me how to wash my hands properly. I always, every day I wash, when I'm washing my hands, I said, make sure and get in between, because that's what...
You guys are always gonna remember me. You know.
We do have the thirtieth already waiting.
Amen!
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And we'll move on to Trustee Eddington.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First of all, we had a great Lions Club, wanted to just put out a thank you, another great barbecue event. About 150 teams, various teams doing various cooking things. It was very successful. The weather turned out to really be very good. And we were very lucky because that wasn't the predictions. But good event. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I really don't know how many people were there, but there were a lot. And people had a good time, good food, good competitions. And we start planning for next year. The other two things that I have, first one, and this one, of course, is extremely important. Sat, or Saturday, Tuesday was the last day for Arker School System. And today was the last day for School District 201. So from this point forward, kids are gonna be out playing, they're gonna be in front of their houses, they're gonna be going to parks, they're gonna be riding their bikes. So everyone, please slow down and, and watch the kids and protect them. As a lot of people know, I have said this before, that's our number-one asset in this town is our young people. And somebody better come along and replace me one of these days, so. And the last thing I have is just, there's a recap on your desk. Last week was DuPage Mayors and Managers Legislative Committee meeting. Since that time, of course, the state legislature has adjourned. Most of, if not all of, the governor's agenda got passed in this first session. We actually have a budget. And we have, and there are some new bills that have gone through. The gaming bill, the gas tax to fix the, some of the roads and bridges within the state of Illinois, which are...
You mean to fix the budget?
That need to be fixed, yes. And a couple others. So there's a lot of us who may not agree with all the things that happened. However, there was a lot of cooperation from both sides of the aisle. And it was probably of the last five, one of the best legislative sessions that there's been. And one of the big things that's going to go, if not already on the governor's desk to sign, is there was a bill that we have pushed, both Westmont and DuPage Mayors and Managers, which was to allow some of the money that's collected from the hotel motel tax to be used within the community for capital improvements, like to fix roads and do things like that. That bill passed. It's 25% of that money can now be used in that capacity, assuming that Governor Pritzker will sign it.
And that's the non-home rule?
For non-home rule communities, right. So that was a big bill. We thought we had it passed last year, but then some people threw some amendments on it that made it absolutely no way. And it was defeated. But this year it's passed. We're just hoping that it'll get signed and that'll move forward. But as I said, the spirit of cooperation and the fact that things actually got done and they have an approved budget compared to where we've been for the last four years, it's unbelievable. It was a good year.
Good.
And that's it, sir. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on the agenda, items to remove from the consent agenda. Anybody see any item?
I'd like to point something out, though, for everybody's information. On the consent agenda is a special event. That we said only if it was identical to previous years would it be on the consent agenda. So it was mistakenly placed. There are some changes to the Holy, not alarming changes, but there are changes to the Holy Trinity Fall Fest, so I leave that. I can cover it during the consent agenda or pull it separately, your choice.
Just cover it during the consent agenda?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So seeing no other item to be pulled off the consent agenda, I'd ask you to read.
First this evening, our village board minutes. Board to consider a motion to approve the minutes of the May 23rd, 2019 village board meeting. It's followed by finance ordinance number three in the amount of $1,292,836.2. There's one purchase order, KLF Enterprises. This is for the demolition services at 55 East Burlington at the Public Works Facility. The one community event that we were talking about is the Holy Trinity Family Fall Fest. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following requests from Holy Trinity for their 2019 Family Fall Fest. First is an amusement license fee waiver, second tent permit fee waiver, third amplified sound permit, and fourthly, the public use right-of-way. The, Mr. McIntyre has highlighted the, you know, the differences. And his list here is, this is the first time the event will have a full carnival, bringing, you know, the proposal to our awareness and then, you know, the review of impact, EMA and such. The entire layout of the event will be on Holy Trinity property, mostly on their commuter lot, which is the lot that's across from Uncle Bubbs and south of that apartment building. None of the layout will close off Village right-of-way. There will be no alcohol sold or served at this event for this year. There will be no live bands at the event for this year. The event is a fundraiser for Holy Trinity Parish and their goal is creating a parish center for their congregation. It says next year they may hope to expand to invent, you know, food, beverage, and entertainment. And Holy Trinity has already met with their neighbor, the Park District, regarding the item and has their concurrent serve lesson. That concludes the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to approve as read?
So a motion to approve?
Motion made and second to approve. On to question. Trustee Barry?
Nothing, don't have a second.
Anybody? Nope. Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on, unfinished business. Water rate adjustment. Board to consider ordinance amending water rates. And this was on last month's agenda. And because we didn't have four votes...
You forgot to vote.
I forgot to vote, so it essentially failed. John brought this up, so I'll turn to Director Parker. I think you explained it last month, but we were missing two board members, so the floor is yours.
Sure. So as you recall, a couple of years ago, our Public Works Department put together an analysis on the infrastructure needs for the water department over the next couple of years. At that time, the needed increase to the water rate was significant and so the board decided... decided the best thing to do would be to increase it a little bit each year over time. So we have our standard 40 cent increase, same thing which we had in the past year and which we're planning on the next couple of years, to do that, to cover that infrastructure needs from the Water Department. In addition to that, there's another 3 cent increase, which is due to the increase in the cost of water from the DuPage Water Commission, and so that is the extent of the increase.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Parker.
Motion made and second to approve. On to question. Anybody seeing none? I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
No.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on, new business. Engineering agreement, Central Business District Alley Reconstruction Project, Section C. Board to consider ordinance authorizing an engineering agreement with Thomas Engineering Group for Phase One and Two Design Engineering Services for the proposed Central Business District Alley Reconstruction Project, Section C. And Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The request is to approve the sum of $69,853.60 for Phase One and Two Design Engineering Services for the proposed CBD Alley Reconstruction Project, Section D bounded, actually should be Section C, bounded by Cass and Lincoln between Naperville and Norfolk. We've halted design on Section D due to the potential redevelopment of Cass and Burlington Reconstruction, of that's, of that specific alley, which includes green initiatives. The staff recommends approval of the proposal of the amount that is already stated for Phase One and Phase Two Design Engineering Services for CBD Alley Reconstruction Project C.
I have a motion.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second.
Nero. Motion made and second to approve. On to question.
Sure, now I got questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So it looks like they've been already out there surveying a little bit?
Yes, they have.
And doing, so Phase One and Phase Two will take care of the environmental?
Correct. Phase One is environmental, Phase Two is actual design part of it.
Okay. And then it looks like they're also, I know not on subject here, but finishing up, what would be Alley B or C?
Alley E.
Alley E.
It's A, B, C, D, E, and then F.
Okay, and that's moving forward.
Yeah, the concrete, we had to let it cure for seven days, and then it has to sit for another seven days before you can actually put heavy equipment on it. You can actually walk on it now, but it has to, has to cure for 14 consecutive days before you can actually drive heavy equipment, and we have to drive heavy equipment, obviously, to lay the bricks. So if we weren't putting bricks on it, it'd already be open, but since we're putting bricks on it, we have to wait another few days. The plan is to start on Monday, depending on weather, and it'll start putting the bricks down on Monday. And it should take, depending on weather, two, three, four days at the most, and so our goal is by the end of next week, hopefully it's open.
And then with this engineering moving forward tonight, we would look at spring, hopefully a spring project on this, if budgetary and so forth?
Correct. I mean, actually, depending on how fast they can design it and turn it, and we can turn it around, I mean, there's a possibility we could actually start on it in the fall, but the goal is to do it in the spring, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes. New business B. Increase the minimum age for the purchase of tobacco. Board to consider ordinance increasing the minimum age to purchase tobacco from 18 to 21 years of age to match new state legislation. Attorney Zeminek.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, the, the state of Illinois recently passed legislation increasing the minimum age to purchase tobacco products from 18 to 21, effective statewide, effective in all communities. So it's really, this is just a ministerial update to amend our tobacco licensing ordinance to mirror that state law requirement. The state law and this ordinance will go into effect July 1st of 2019. There is one other correction that was made that's in the ordinance. Village local ordinance restricts persons who sell tobacco products to the age of 18 or older. State law previously and currently actually allows someone 16 years of age or older to sell tobacco products. And I was talking to Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern. We have never encountered someone as young as 16 working in like a 7-Eleven or a gas station, and debated whether to have a more restrictive requirement of 18, which is currently on the books, but ultimately, and in discussing with the mayor, felt that consistency with the state law was, was best, so we're not going back and forth with merchants constantly trying to explain that our rules are different. But if they, whether they're 16, 18, or 50, if they sell to a minor, they're going to be held liable.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Eddington.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second. On to question. Again, now's the time, if you want to keep it 18 or move it to 16, just so we can.
Keep it at 18? I thought...
Well, it's, and it's our ordinance now, we don't, but the state is 16, we're different. Now, we're trying to match the state.
So what you can do is be oftentimes more restrictive than state law. You can't be less restrictive.
Okay.
And 18 is more restrictive, so presume, unless it's preemption by the state where they say you can't legislate in this area at all, then we'd have the ability to do that. So, and I don't see any preemption language in this statute, so conceivably you could keep it at 18, but we talked about the practical impact and really don't, haven't encountered 16-year-olds selling tobacco products anywhere.
Yeah, no, I'm finally keeping it consistent. I, I mean, my, I just have a personal thing on the state deciding that they're going to, you know, allows, you know, the federal government allows them to go fight for us, but yeah, we're not going to let them buy a cigar. To me, it's just, it's overreaching, but I understand why we have to support it because it's the state law. It's the philosophical thing with me, but all good.
No, you're right.
And I think you heard before, too, that this is only the part of the whole situation because we've made now the purchase of tobacco products at 21, but I think I mentioned that the things we've talked about at the legislative side of it is sooner or later, we've got to start addressing the vape stores and, because what we're getting from some of our Health Department folks and some others is that the kids who go to the e-cigarettes and those other things are actually becoming addicted.
So on that point, I don't want to detract too much from this motion, but Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulhern and I are looking into that. He's already assembled research, and it's already coming up as a proposed zoning text amendment to restrict locations where vape stores can be located, and further restrictions beyond that are being investigated.
Yeah, I know what I talked about. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any additional comments? Anybody in the audience seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C. Declaration of Village Property as Surplus. Board to consider ordinance declaring village-owned vehicles and equipment as surplus property to be sold at open-off auctions. Director Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor. The property that we identify as attachment, which are attached, is outlined to be useful, it's reached its useful life. The vehicle is not economically maintainable anymore. If you remember, this is the white Ford Escape that we've had for many years, so we're asking for it to be declared a surplus and sold. It will be removed from the village property, properties inventory. One fleet vehicle will be disposed of at the auction through Open Door Auction Services on behalf of DuPage Mayors and Managers. Staff recommends declaring this piece of equipment or vehicle surplus.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero. On to question. And it's a, go ahead, Trustee Barry.
Mike, I, I know this is the hybrid, is this our, like, last hybrid that we have?
Uh, no. I, uh, we still have a Ford C-Max that I currently drive, and that vehicle is in great shape. We'll have that for hopefully many years.
So I see most of our...
It's not...
We have hybrids coming.
Yes, we do. Yeah, I was going to say, okay.
That answers my question, then, because I see other villages, it seems like they're, they're making another push for it again. It seemed like it died for a while.
Correct.
And now, now we will be...
It seems like the flex, the, you know, those gas prices go up and down, goes up and down, people tend to get more excited about, you know, battery-operated vehicles or, so we are, we are still going to be getting those, yes. We're not getting away from that at all by any means.
And then still none of the natural gas ones or anything like that?
No. I've reached out to Downers Grove, and they've had some issues with their natural gas because the motors and engines, so we're kind of waiting to see if they can solve their issues first. Virgil's very active communicating with their maintenance department over there, and once we find out they have a good control of that, then we'll, we'll definitely. It seems to work really well with the larger vehicles like buses, but smaller vehicles like what you, we use, they've had a lot of issues with their motors. And so we want to make sure that, we don't want to jump in on something that, if they're having issues, we don't want to have the same issues. But they can get it figured out, we'll be definitely looking into that.
Okay, thank you. And in a little bit different way, the bigger community like Downers Grove has, like, new vehicles at their administrative levels, too. We all use continued use as they come out of the Police Department, and, you know, we use those, too. So our selection for Village Hall and code enforcement and building inspector stuff is whatever comes out of the Police Department.
Any other?
They should be thankful, we were thinking about going bicycles, so they should like those used ones, those are good.
Oh, bike to Shin-Chu.
Yeah, there we go.
Got one of those in the Police Department, too, so...
Take a bike. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business D. Regular meeting schedule modification. Board to consider a motion to amend the regular, regular meeting schedule of the Village Board to cancel the July 4th, 2019 meeting date.
I don't see why. We can see the fireworks from that window.
You can see it from up here?
Get a better view from the roof.
The next meeting, if we do that, in the regular rotation, will be July 18th. So do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Eddington.
Second.
Nero. Motion made and second to approve. Any comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Eddington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
And Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. Miscellaneous. Manager maids.
I was just going to point out, so for all week long, when we knew we weren't going to hold the Administration Finance Committee meeting, I told you, and I did send you the, the staff report portion with the notes, and each time I qualified it with, that after I completed my section, I would send it to you again, and there's nothing, still nothing in there. It was supposed to be an update for one North Cass, and there is no update. So the update is, is we're still working on retaining our TIF consultant that moved employers, so we're retaining the individual with the new employer, and we're almost, we're almost there. So we expect the developer will have an EDA available as soon as the, what's, a July meeting, not in two weeks, but...
Yeah, but, yeah, well, actually, we don't know about his pace.
But the goal is October to have him at P and Z.
Yes. It's, it's his current goal.
His current. Anything else, Spencer, to add to that?
That sums it up.
And again, the flower baskets on Cass look good.
Look good.
Very good. Really dresses up downtown. Any other? Larry, do you have anything to add? We're missing anything? Oh, the attorney's eminent.
Just to plant a seed in everyone's mind, you're, I know you're aware of this, but with the passage of the recreational marijuana law, I did have a discussion with the mayor today about, you know, future research and things that the board will have to consider. The Village has the option to opt out of allowing dispensaries in town, recreational dispensaries, but not medical dispensaries. If dispensaries are to be allowed here, where should they be located? Where are the zoning restrictions, distances from parks and schools and other dispensaries, et cetera, are all things we have to start considering? And then we also discussed the possibility of, like, smoking lounges possibly developing, and what regulations or restrictions can we impose on something like that? Even in states where marijuana is already legal, smoking lounges appear to be few and far between, or completely nonexistent in many states, but it's still something I'm going to keep an eye on. So for future discussion.
Trustee Barker?
I just wanted to comment on that. I was floored today, I was at 63rd and Fairview, and Family Video, Family Video is advertising already. CBD oils and gummies and...
They're, they're selling already, yeah.
Well, I think they advertise CBD. It's not legal, that's not legalized.
Yeah, CBD's... It's on their sign. I'm just saying what's on their sign.
I wonder why you go there.
I used to go there, but the way we're going, though, the age for that will be 18, but cigarettes will be 21.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my comment.
Hey, John, are they doing it the same way with the licenses that they did with the medical? Were they only giving so many out?
Well, it's, it's different, and it's the same. I mean, there is an application process, preference is given at first for the first round to existing medical dispensaries, and then they're going to open it up, and there's going to be a much larger number, I forget the multiplier, but it will be a much larger number of dispensaries that...
Medical, because there's only a few of those.
Yeah.
The state gives those licenses.
Right. Subject to compliance with local zoning.
Do we know how the tax works from it?
Uh, I think it's a 3% local tax in any sales made from a dispensary within your borders.
Also, I understand, again, things can change down the road, but I believe if we decide to opt out, we can never opt back in.
Except by voter referendum.
Larry was just going to tell us that.
Do we have to make a decision in a certain amount of time?
Yes. It's a one-year time period, I need to double-check. I, I know there's a, a time clock, and I don't know if it's from when the governor signs the bill, or from when it goes into effect, January 1st, 2020, but I'll have that information for you.[1663.04]